Hest.
I think we're live again. Judge, are you going to be timing? She's timed.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock, Tuesday, May 27th. I call this meeting the order of the Burnet County Commissioners' Court. And make note for the record that Commissioner Damon Byerly is not present today. All other commissioners are present. This is Brian Wilson. We'll start off with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. So first, I'd like to ask Steve Anderson to come forward. If you come forward and do the invocation up here, I sure would appreciate it. Mr. Anderson is one of our veterans and often a coordinator of our Memorial Day Parade. We appreciate you coming here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Father, which art in heaven, we are grateful for this day, for your many blessings to us. For this land we call America, for the men and women who have gone before us and shed their blood and have given their lives so that we could be a free people with the rights that we have. We thank you for the rain that we've been given, and you know we always ask for more, and may it continue to come in generous but careful ways so that there will not be a loss of life or immor property. We thank you for all of our first responders. We take so much for granted in our lives every day. And for the most part, we probably think nothing bad will ever happen to us. But Lord, when it does, we thank you for these people who come to help save us in our times of need. For our military men and women, wherever they are serving around this nation and this world, that you will be with them, that they will feel your presence. And now, our Father, we ask your blessing upon the men before us, that your will will be done in this meeting today and be with us, we ask, until we meet again. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Can I rise and say the pledges, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. On the Texas flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the state of Texas. One state, under God, indivisible.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start into the order of the agenda. The first thing that we'd like to do is call for any general public comment about an item that's not on the agenda today. Is there any general public comment for something not on the agenda today?
Good morning. Charlie Parker. My comments are referencing the use of location analytics technology at the recent Blue Bonnet Festival here in Burnet. Geo-fencing, massive smartphone data collection in progress. Spyware, AI tracking and tracing anyone, anywhere, anytime. Big Brother bureaucrats in Burnet County need your information. How much money do you make? Where do you live? How old are you? Are you married? Do you have any children? Why were you in Burnet County and what did you do in Burnet County? Where were you in Burnet County and how long were you in Burnet County? Demographics is the term used to describe the information gathered without your knowledge or consent. Tourism and marketing is the guise for Burnet County to use high-tech, artificial intelligence spyware on unsuspecting citizens' smartphones that visit or live in Burnet County. Placer AI is the name of the company that Burnet County Commissioners' Court engaged and signed contracts with in 2024 and 2025. $48,000 is a hefty price tag for two years of access into Placer AI spyware technology. The elected civil servants of Burnet County, namely the county judge and commissioners, have decided they have the unlawful authority to collect data from the public in spite of your inalienable rights to privacy. The Fourth Amendment to the Constitution and the Bill of Rights specifically states the following. "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, house, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." I object to the Burnet County Commissioners' Court decision to pay for and use this invasive technology. I demand that the Commissioners' Court issue a public statement that Burnet County will immediately cease and discontinue any further use of all smartphone data collection, geo-fencing, and location analytics technology for tourism and marketing planning. I further demand that the Burnet County Judge and Commissioners abide by their oaths to obey the U.S. Constitution and Texas Constitution and adhere to those same documents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge Wilson and commissioners, last night I sent you each a copy of my comments by email. Claire Nibro, Burnet County voter, taxpayer, and interested person. Trust is the lifeblood of our democracy, yet in Burnet County, it's been fractured by a decade of mismanagement under the former county judge. Your leadership now holds the power to heal this divide and rebuild a thriving community. But trust isn't restored with words. It demands bold, transparent action. Today, I urge you to take three critical steps to renew public faith in this court. First, champion the public's right to engage. For years, Burnet County residents have spoken at these meetings, shaping our shared future. Yet too often, voices are sidelined. Actively invite questions and discussion on agenda items. This simple act rooted in our county's tradition signals you value every resident's perspective, fostering trust through inclusion. Second, show us your deliberation. Routine items like variances or asset transfers may need little debate, but major decisions like appointing a new county judge or spending $850,000 on voting equipment demand open, robust discussion. Silence breeds suspicion. When you deliberate transparently, you prove this court respects the public's right to know. Let us hear your reasoning, your debates, your commitment to our future. Third, keep us informed. Commissioners, dedicate a few minutes each quarter to update us on your precincts' projects on the record. These updates aren't just reports. They're a promise to keep us connected to our government's work. Likewise, Judge Wilson revived the budget workshops that Commissioner Dockery led in 2023. Those sessions, where residents offered input while respecting decorum, sparked hope. Their absence now feels like a step backward. Bring them back to show you're listening. The path to trust is straightforward. Open the doors to participation, debate with transparency, and communicate consistently. These aren't just suggestions. They're the foundation of a government that serves its people. Burnet County deserves leadership that acts with courage and accountability. You have the chance to rebuild what was broken. Seize it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I'm Patty Coe, Burnet County voter, taxpayer, interested person. I have two topics today. One is I'm going to read Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics. Texas Government Code Section 552.001. Under the fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government that adheres to the principle that government is the servant and not the master of the people, it is the policy of this state that each person is entitled, unless otherwise expressly provided by law, at all times to complete information about the affairs of government and the official acts of public officials and employees. The people, in delegating authority, do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created, the government. The second topic is a notice to formally notify the Burnet County Commissioners' Court of concerns regarding the administration of elections in Burnet County. My notice intends to preserve and record these objections for the public record and should not be misconstrued as consent through silence. There are seven issues. One, unauthorized change in local political subdivision contracts. Two, failure to disclose advanced approval by the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State approval of the voting equipment contract is dated April 28, 2025, which is after early voting began on April 22, 2025. The Secretary of State approval letter clearly mentions advanced approval or the equipment contract is void. Number three, procurement and transparency violations. Similar to the recent Verity 2.7 acquisition, the 2024 e-poll books have an additional problem of acquisition using federal grant funds, which require additional scrutiny and compliance. Four, Toma violation, possibly through a series of discussions. Discussions about purchasing new voting equipment were conducted privately via email and other methods, suggesting a series of communications constituting a quorum-level discussion outside of a notice meeting, potentially violating Toma. Five, transparency and notice failures. Six, failure to convene the county election board. Seven, governance and oversight deficiencies. It's important to remember that candidates have invested money and time in their races. Local political subdivisions have invested taxpayer funds and resources in elections. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay? Thank you. Now we'll move to agenda item number four. Presentation of general community grant checks on behalf of the Burnet County and the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. Commissioner Dockery.
Thank you, Judge. Yes, I'd like to ask Andrea Shields to come forward. She's the executive director of the correct title, Andrea?
That's right.
Of the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. And she's got a few words to share with us, and then we'll go straight into check presentations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. My name is Andrea Shields with the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation. We are a nine-county housing finance corporation that was founded in 1981. Our mission is to provide workforce housing opportunities in the form of single-family homeownership and multifamily rental opportunities for our operating jurisdictions, of which Burnet County is one. This morning, I am pleased to be here to present several checks to some community groups in Burnet County that you all have chosen to receive as part of our community grant initiative. To date, Capital Area has reinvested into our community $16 million since our founding, and I'm thrilled to be here this morning to present these checks.
Welcome. Welcome you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without further ado, do you want to read the list, sir?
No, go ahead.
Okay. If these folks would come forward, let Andrea, the judge, why don't you step around and do your presentation. Burnet County Vet Rides. Do we have anybody? Sophie.
So, all of these checks are in the same amount, correct?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Sophie with Vet Rides. We really appreciate what you do for our veterans. It's a critical service. I've been really enjoyed getting a visit with you over the last few weeks, and we're going to continue to work on this to make sure that the people who served us get served. So thank you so much. God bless you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Williamson slash Burnet County Meals on Wheels?
Hi. There's a... My wife and I did the Meals on Wheels during Thanksgiving, and it's critical to... The people are so grateful and so happy to receive this. So we appreciate everything you do here in our county. Thank you.
Burnet County Child Welfare Board.
Okay, I'm going to try not to tear up on this one. Oh, my gosh. What you guys do to help people who have been abused and neglected is just overwhelming. And thank you so much for you and all the volunteers and everybody that works on behalf of abused and neglected children. God bless you.
Thank you.
Highland Lakes Family Crisis Center.
Highland Lakes Family Crisis Center? I'll just keep that one. No, I'm just kidding. I'll give it to them later, I promise.
Your Country Children's Advocacy.
I'm the same thing. I haven't got to work with you yet, but it's nice to meet you. Thank you for coming, and it just means the world to me.
Casa for the Highland Lakes.
Casa? Get to keep another. All right. I know this joke's getting old.
Boys and Girls Club of the Highland Lakes.
Oh, awesome. Well, thank you all for coming. Just what a wonderful service you are to our community. Thank you, Derek.
The Highland Lakes Crisis Network, which is now known as the Ark of the Highland Lakes, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Sinclair. Appreciate what you're doing. The other day at the tornado, we... It was two and a half hours. You barely beat the rain for a family that lost their roof, and you had your volunteers up here, and thank you so much. We all depend on you. Thank you.
Thank you. The Helping Center of Marble Falls. Lakes Area Care Incorporated.
Oh, good. Hi, good morning.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I've always supported you when I was a state employee and continue to do so, so thank you.
I'd like to add that we are celebrating our 40th year of giving out food when it is that needed. Thank you so much. This will go a long way. Thank you so much.
Joseph's Food Pantry.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The Holy Cross Food Pantry. Community Resource Center.
Thank you. Thank you. I just loved getting to use your facility, and thank you for supporting the county and helping people in crisis.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
And the Workforce Network, Inc.
How exciting. One of the greatest things that anybody can do to keep out of crime and keep out of poverty is have a good job, isn't it? So thank you so much for helping our people find jobs.
And to all 14 recipients. We again thank the Capital Area Housing Finance Corporation for so generously providing those funds and allowing us to allocate those funds on their behalf.
Well, that's the fun part of the job. Let's get on to the other business. So the next item I'll call is number five. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding adoption of a proclamation of a request for CAMPO, which is the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, to perform an update to the Burnet County Thoroughfare Plan. Commissioner Dockery.
Yes, Judge. As the appointment to CAMPO, I have had discussions with Ashby Johnson, who's their executive director, about updating our transportation plan. They did an abbreviated version in 2020, but we really haven't done a thorough update to our transportation plan since 2010. And so they have agreed to perform that work at no cost to Burnet County. And so I would move for adoption of the proclamation, and we'll send that on to them. And they're talking about possibly starting in August. And that would be a very intense, public-involved process. So anyway, public will be very involved.
Like workshops and getting stakeholder groups together, business? Okay. Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we... This seems to... On its surface, it seems pretty simple, but I guess just wanting to understand that basically CAMPO, the planning area, that we're part of a regional planning effort, and so they would be providing any assistance to help us develop a plan that also fits into a larger organization?
Yes, sir.
Into the larger regional plan?
Absolutely, sir.
Sorry, I can't... Herb told me the other day, he thinks I couldn't speak if I didn't have my hands tied. So I'll try to quit doing that.
Anyway, yes, sir. That's exactly what it is.
Commissioners, any other questions, or are you familiar with this process, this program? Okay.
It's needed.
Okay. Well, yes.
We update it.
Yeah. Does it include anything related to transportation overall, or is it just for roads and highways?
It's mostly for roads and highways, but we can ask them to include a multimodal aspect of the plan, if that's what we'd like to do as well.
Seems like it would be appropriate in our county, given the recent pause of construction or planning for one mode of transportation that some people... Okay. All right, so is that a motion?
Yes, sir. I made the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Two seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Dockery.
Yes, sir.
Number six, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding approval of the Burnet County Judge to sign a document for the Friends of Spice Wood Community Library, assuring that the Friends of the Spice Wood Community Library Fund will not be diminished, curtailed, or cut in any way as a result of being awarded the Tucker Foundation Grant. Now, this is one of those little tricky chicken and egg issues. Oh, is this the... Oh, it's the CAMPO. The... So the current Commissioners' Court can only through formal budget deliberations can... Are they allowed to make obligations? So alls we're saying in this resolution is whatever decisions we make are legally in proper authority when we get to the budget cycle. But for today, we're making a commitment that we won't reduce funds because they got a grant. So I want to be careful about that little nuance. Is that clear? Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, hearing none. I think it's a good idea, given the limited scope of what we could commit to today without going through the budget process. So we're just saying that if they get a grant, we won't reduce the money that we might give them in the future because of the grant. So any... Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, Luther moves for approval. Any second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, sir.
Second.
Call your second. And any other discussion on this issue? Okay. The... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number seven is discuss, consider, and take appropriate action for new motor grader for Road and Bridge Precinct Number One to be purchased out of tax notes, tax note funds.
We are looking to purchase a motor grader. We went out for bids.
He moved but forgot to move his mic. Thank you.
Is that better? Hear me?
Working now? Now we're on. So our motor grader is wore out. We've shimmed it for the last time. We went out for bids. We have one for... From Holt for $302.959. And that is the bid that we're recommending going with. The other one was from... I don't know that they're in here. There was one higher. John Deere was $321.101.45. And there was a Romco for $268.202. And that one just has a 11-foot board. The one we're asking to purchase has a 14-foot board.
And how much would you say the price again, please? Sorry.
That is okay. $302.959. No change. Next one.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I had clear that the $302.959 was the one you're requesting.
$321.513.74 was John Deere. And then, of course, the other one, which didn't have a board, a blade.
Is there any public comment on this issue?
Patty Coe, I just had a quick question. You had one vote that was for not the same spec and two that were for the same spec. Is that really...
That's what they sent us. They didn't have 14-foot board. They thought we'd be, I guess, interested in 11-foot, so...
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded for approval on this item. Any discussion, any further discussion on the selection? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, dis- Okay. Discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the acceptance of gifted deed for 1.02 acres located at Stringtown Cemetery, 4744 South, 1174 Bertram, Texas, 78605. And so, Ms. Manning, would you mind just going ahead and talking briefly about it here at the mic, please, which you're on the spot?
Blair Manning, Tourism and Marketing Director for Burnet County. This is a gifted deed of 1.02 acres that the Historical Commission's Cemetery Committee is working with the owners to be able to finish out the project and survey on the Stringtown Cemetery in the eastern part of the county.
And just to clarify, the map that I did get a glance at the other day, it looked like it was surveyed out in a couple pieces, but the part that we're getting, the 1.02, has the old Stringtown Cemetery in it. That's correct, right?
Correct. Yes.
The way... I guess the extra line, people were asking... I don't know. Somebody saw it or heard about it or something, and they asked me. So, I wanted to be clear. This is... The point of this is to donate to the county the land that is the old slave and then later historically black cemetery that was here in the county.
Correct. Yes.
All right. And it's a fascinating history, and I look forward to working with the Historical Commission and you on developing this property and the opportunities related to tourism. So, is there any public comment on this issue? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept this deed and go ahead and accept it as county property?
I move to accept it.
Thank you. Mr. Collier, any second?
I'll second it.
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
Does that piece of property have public access?
Yeah. County Road 326A.
It butts up right here in the front and then...
Oh, that's right. It wasn't...
No, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah. It... So, I had asked the Historical Commission and Ms. Manning to... So, one part of that map, I don't know that I didn't see it very well, is 1174, I guess, on the short end of that map. So, on the right-hand side.
And that was actually part of the reason for the gifted deed, so that it could have street access that will kind of act as a parking lot area.
So, now, it does have the, as Commissioner Collier said, the 336 access.
326A.
326A access. But I've asked Ms. Manning and the Historical Commission to at least inquire as to what it would cost to buy the part that's out on 1174.
Correct.
It's not making any commitments. It was just an inquiry because, especially as it concerns tourism, and the historical value of that property might be better served by consider... At least considering what other options might be available associated with this property. So, thank you, Ms. Manning. Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? I've already called for public comment, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. The motion passes. Wonderful. Okay. The next item, number nine. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the request for a replat of lots 56 and 57. Oh, okay. 56 and 57, Seven Creeks Ranch, Phase Three, to be known as Lot 56A, Seven Creeks Ranch, Phase Three, a combination of two lots into one.
Good morning, Judge Wilson, Commissioners, and members of the public. Jessica Helled, representing Development Services, this morning.
Okay, go ahead.
I think he placed it there before you.
Okay.
It's a combination of lots.
So, putting two lots into one and then... Okay. All right. So, is there any public comment on this issue? All right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that it be approved. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I take a vote. Call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. The motion passes, so we're going to number nine.
Ten.
I'm sorry, ten. Sorry, didn't get my check here yet. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on a request for a replat of Lot 6A, The Oaks at Spice Wood, Block C, to be known as Lot 6A1 and 6A2, The Oaks at Spice Wood, Block C, a division of one lot into two. Commissioner Dockery.
Yes, sir. On this situation, this is actually going to be right on the Burnet-Blanco County line, and Blanco County is going to also have to take action on this. I don't know, Jessica, do you know if Blanco County is taking action or they're waiting on us first? I think that's what I heard. They're waiting on us to do it first. So, anyway, it's a very simple replat. Leaves tracks of sizes of six acres and four acres, four acres in the new tract that's being established. I'd move for approval.
Okay. It's been... Second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. All right. Is there any public comment on this issue? Can you... Yeah, can you... Oh, if you don't... Oh, okay. Thank you.
Very good. My only question was, is Blanco County waiting for us to take action? Oh, they've already approved. Okay. Very good. Excellent. Once y'all approve it... They do have a little different rule over there about signatures.
Just go ahead and state your name for the record. Just sorry.
Mike Weaver.
Thank you.
I don't know of any other county that requires my laws to be signed and then two paper copies to be signed. I've got them right here for y'all to sign.
Okay.
If y'all choose to... You want to go ahead and take that? Yeah, it was a little complicated, but yeah, all's ready. Once y'all sign it, then we can take it to them to get signatures, then we can distribute those to the counties.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you for the clarification, sir. Motion second, Judge.
Okay. And I've already called public comment on this issue, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Go ahead and call Agenda Item Number 11. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the petition from Brian David Stevens to cancel lots 142, 143, 144, and 145 of Shady Acres, Section 2. Commissioner Luther.
I believe we have members of Shady Acres POA here, and I believe we're going to pass on 11 and 12.
Okay. Okay. So, both 11 and 12. We'll go ahead and put off to another meeting until further discussions can be had. Okay? All right. So...
Is that 11 and 12?
11?
Okay.
No, this is... I have Sharpie. Is that okay? Sharpie on this? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. I call Agenda Item Number 13. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding a variance from the Burnet County subdivision regulations by David and Marie Mallard for two-acre tract out of 137-acre tract identified as BCAD parcel number 49416, located at 1304 County Road 258. And Commissioner Byerly's not here today. Does any... Did he... Oh, you have that? Okay. What... Do you want to just basically describe what this is asking?
Yeah. What's the purpose of the division?
Sorry, I'm looking through my notes here. Hold on just a second.
Okay.
The division is just... Let's see. Is this... Sorry. I think this is just the two into one. Is that correct?
No, this is the one where they're cutting out, at least on the agenda, two-acre tract out of 137 acres.
Yes.
Do we know what... For what purposes and what arrangements?
I actually... I do not.
Okay.
Do not know that. Commissioner Byerly's not here, so do we want to...
I don't know. Is that...
Continue with it?
I don't know if that's been... Has it been reviewed by the groundwater district?
They're actually... The reasoning is wanting to sell, is all the reasoning they're giving.
So, it's starting out as two acres, and then they're going to divide it up into three with a point, say, four and a point seven?
No, I think this is the one that is on... It's Agenda Item Number 13.
13, 137.
They've got 137 acres that they're cutting out, two acres out.
Two acres on the front.
To sell.
Oh, I see.
That would be my only hesitancy.
Right. That is a lot smaller than what we generally accept for... And without some further explanation, I think we're just going to have to pass on this one, too. I hate to do that if it's uncomfortable for Mr. Byerly or the landowners, but without sufficient information, I don't see how we can proceed. Commissioner Byerly. Is that okay? All right. I'm going to pass. Go to number 14. Discuss and consider and take appropriate action regarding the release of the maintenance portion of cash bond, number CB-22-2-8, for Robinson Ranch subdivision in the amount of $14,685.30. The two-year period expired May 23, 2025. Commissioner Collier.
Yes. Me and Mr. Darling and my foreman all went out and looked at the road. It's held up good. And I move for approval.
Is there anyone here from Robinson Ranch subdivision?
Okay.
Are you...
There's no problems with it at all. I mean, like Chad said, that...
You want to... If you don't mind, let me state your name for the record.
Tyler Robson.
Okay.
Like Chad said, there was one spot in the road. The construction or the road company that originally built the road came out, repaired it. It's all fixed up. It doesn't need to be resurfaced or anything like that, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robson. All right. Any public comment on this issue? All right. Okay. Then, do I... You already moved.
Your motion, second.
Second. And then, so, it's been moved and seconded that we've approved this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay. Number 14. That was 14, sorry. Let me get my check down. Number 15. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the budget entered department line item transfers. So, some of these are routine items to cover, just like 90... You know, $100. I got caught in a funny the other day because I said something like, a lot of these... All these cents on these budget transfers don't make sense to me, and I didn't mean to. Thank you, Stephanie, for pointing that out to me. But we're going to try to... You know, a lot of these budget transfers, they just, you know, need to be more general, but sometimes they're trying to cover specific items. But most of these items that are here today from the general fund are to just to move money. As we get towards the end of the year, what's going to happen is that we have things that occur, like this morning, you know, there's a leak in a building that we didn't know, you know, didn't know it hadn't rained in so long, we didn't know it leaked. So, there'll be more and more of small items that'll have to be moved. What I really'd like to get to by the end of the year, as we're managing our budget forward, gentlemen, is that we ensure that we don't pass into the next fiscal year with a lot of negatives. There will always be some, but we'll do our best to make sure that we manage the budget intentionally and on purpose and consistent with the original budget adopted. So, I don't... Unless there's questions specifically, are there any public comments about these line item transfers? They're just... You know, a lot of them are small items, like something at the jail that they needed to purchase some items to make sure that they had proper equipment at the jail, supplies in my office.
I'd move for approval.
Okay. All right. No public comment, so it's been moved that approved this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay. Budget amendments. Just get my glasses out here. So, these amendments are to move money into items such as the 127 Jackson Street for the obligation, from the tax notes into the obligation. We have road equipment that we, I think, that we're... Oh, I'm sorry, the SO cars that we approved. So, we approved the item last week, but we need to make sure that the tax note money is in the right account. Professional services for the Wart's Dam, to move that into paying some bills, a lot of which we get reimbursed for. Road and bridge money that's being spent, moving from the tax note RMB1 into RMB account. And then, the rest of this is both the road equipment and RMB1 and four, to execute contracts and do road work. Okay. So, are there any questions about these items? I'm going to call for public comment. Any public comment on these items? Okay. So, all right.
I move for approval.
Okay. Dockery, motion to...
Second.
Collier, second. All those... Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay. Number 17. Discuss, consider, and take appropriate action for the authorization of payments of claims previously approved by the county auditor. Really appreciate the county auditor getting these out earlier. We've been working on our cutoffs ahead of time. So, and the treasurer, thank you. I forgot about you, but I didn't. So, thank you, Carrie. So, making sure that these get out in appropriate time. Is there any public comment on the bills to be paid this week? All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
Okay. Luther, move for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Collier, second. Is there any discussion on these items? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay. So, these are asset transfers. Looks like we've got a pickup and some metal detectors going out to... It looks like gov delivery on these. And so, any public comment on the asset transfers?
Just a quick comment. We see them going out, but we never see them... We never see the proceeds clearly delineated, showing the revenue coming back in. Maybe that's something could be improved in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, any other, do I hear a motion to approve these asset transfers?
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve these asset transfers, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. Okay, acknowledgement of receipt, I've received a, a Mobility Authority report that's kind of interesting. It talks about if anybody's been to Austin or Cedar Park lately, you can jump on that little, new little route that gets you there at least 10 minutes quicker. And anyway, it talks about some other big projects. Now that I don't have to commute to downtown Austin anymore, it's, now all of a sudden it's convenient to get there, so that's all right. Additionally, I see a, the auditor's financial report. Are there any public comment on these items? I'm on 19, acknowledgement of receipt.
I do have a question about 19B, page 35 of 58 on the balance sheet. There's a general fund for road and bridge that has, it looks like, three certificates of deposit or investments, but also under equity, it shows $3.5 million in unreserved fund balance, and so.
I'm sorry, what page were you on?
35 of 58.
Thank you.
Under which Agenda Item?
This is on 19, on the, she's referencing the Burnett County Auditor 2025 Monthly Financial Report for the month of April.
So my questions are specific to these three investments, Texpool Logic and Texas Class. This is road and bridge general, so who has ultimate authority over road and bridge general? Road and bridge generally, the precinct road and bridge is the Commissioners, but who, who manages this account, and what is this unreserved fund balance allocated for?
Okay, is that your public comment? Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I just want to make sure everybody got that, and that the, the three, the 1.2 million, the 3.8 million, the 1.9 million equals about 7 million under assets, so some questions there. Thank you.
Okay. This is just an acknowledgement, I can't really answer that question because we're not deliberating on this issue, but I will tell you that every month, there's a parallel report that we get according to this, that, that parallels where these funds are in the treasurer's report, so maybe if we could visit afterwards, I will go over that with you, but I really can't bring it up for deliberation here, this is just an acknowledgement today. But I would, I could provide some clarification for you. All right, so there's no action that we needed on this one. Number 20 is discuss, consider, and take appropriate action regarding the contracts, agreements, and grants to be approved and/or ratified. The independent contractor agreement driver for veterans transportation between Robert Bro, Russ, Bruce, Barnett, to go from paid driver to a volunteer driver. The independent contractor agreement driver for veterans transportation between Philip Paul, to go from volunteer driver to paid driver. A ratified contract with Cone for elevator maintenance that was previously approved in Commissioners Court on April 22, 2025. Approval of the works, of the proposed work order for additional engineering services and other contracted services for the Warts Dam Road and Bridge project resulting from reallocating the roadway alignment through the LCR property to avoid the historic archaeological site on the north shore of Marble, Lake Marble Falls, work order to be funded from existing tax notes, tax notes already dedicated to the project. So if I could just ask a question real quick of staff, just, just a minute. So Commissioners, I'll give, on, on Number C, I'm going to withdraw that, a ratified contract with Cone for elevator maintenance that was previously approved in Commissioners Court on April 22. There was just a minute detail that I want to take it off of this agenda, so just scratch it from this vote. We approved the contract amount and the two six-month payments, but they, they were concerned, or somebody in the auditor's office was concerned that it didn't, the change was $36 a month, but it said the change was 36, so, but we didn't get the corrected letter in time, so I'm going to just set this aside for now, and then we'll, we will take that up once we get the corrected letter. So we've approved the contract to make the payments with Cone, but we didn't, for $36, that we got, we got some confusion, so, before we can pay it. So the other items, is there any public comment on the other items, except for C? Okay, all right, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve everything on this list but C?
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that, that we approve this, these contracts and agreements, and, and no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the motion passes, except for C. Okay, 21 is discuss, consider, and take appropriate action concerning calls for bids and bid opening, requests, proposals, qualifications, and related openings. This is 11801, Ranch Road 2341, the boat ramp repairs improvements.
It is commonly referred to as the Burnett County Boat Ramp. So we're looking at going out for bids for the Burnett County Boat Ramp to put in a boat dock, very similar to what Lano County has. They have a, a really neat setup on a trolley system that works real well, so that's what, that's what we're asking for.
Is that in your precinct?
It is. Yes, yes ma'am, Silver Creek area.
Okay.
So I'd move for approval.
So we're submitting for approval to a call for bids, correct?
That is correct.
And hopefully the lake didn't fill up too quick before we get it done, so, all right.
Second.
Second, okay, it's been moved and seconded that we issue a call for bids on the, the new boat ramp at the county park on County Road 2340, I'm sorry, Ranch Road 2341. All those in fa, did I call for public comment yet? Okay, public comment? Okay. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, quick calendar review. The, just, like I said, in the month of June, we're going to have two Commissioners Courts meeting. We definitely need possibly some very long workshops after those, as I've, as I've said in the past, I said workshops, but as I'm beginning to actually put together the agendas, I'll be publishing those out for workshops. We're going to do one on policies, we're going to do more on, we're going to start, start into the budget. I'll be, hopefully today, I'll be sending out the budget request notification to all the, to all the department heads and elected officials. I should have it today or tomorrow, and so, anything else that, anything else that you want on your calendars or that we need to know about? One other comment is, the, I, I don't know that we had the Memorial Day use of the county property on, on our last agenda, but I want to make sure that any, anytime we're using county property, that we try to include that in our future calendar events and notifications, whether it's Southside or wherever, so please, let's try to work together on that. The, I know that was kind of a city and rotary parade yesterday, but it got canceled, but there were dozens of people showing up to, to hang out at the, at the, at the event, and luckily, a preacher showed up and a Gold Star Father showed up, and it did really well, so let's, but let's make sure we get those on our, on our calendars together. Anything else? Do you have anything on the calendar? Damon's not here to tell us all the wonderful things that have happened, I don't know. Okay, Ms. Manning? Okay, I'll call for public comment, just a second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
On June 14, we have our Jackson Street Jams here on the square with Bellamy Brothers. June 13th and 14th will be the Burnett County Area Fair at the AgriLife Building, and June 3, our judge is going to be speaking at Burnett Chambers Coffee and Conversation.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, stop.
So it sounds like you're going to schedule your first public workshop on the budget when you tell us about your performance-based system, correct?
That's already been issued by the Commissioners Court, and it'll be part of the letter that goes out.
Right, so that, is that how your first meeting's going to go, or are you going to educate the public on that, or are you actually going to talk about some budget items?
Not at that time, I think I'll give the elected officials and department heads
Okay.
a chance to, to digest it and start talking about it.
Okay.
This will be more on, the first couple meetings will be on policy process and, and things that need to go into the budget, like we've got insurance notifications that are coming out. There's lots of things to do before we start the budget.
And that will be done during a regular session of the Commissioners Court?
No, that'll be done at a workshop following.
Perfect, during the day or in the evening, so other public?
During the day.
Okay. Right here? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And if Commissioners, just going back to the calendar review, if there's, if, if you think that we should change the times of the workshops or whatever, then just please, please let me know, or let me know your thoughts on it, but at this point, I'm planning on completing a, my, my proposal to you, and while I'll be setting the agenda, is complete the Commissioners Court and then move into a workshop. That's how I've seen it be fairly successful for counties all over the state that I've traveled to. It's usually a good, good format, and so everybody's here and ready to talk about county business, so just give me your input on that side. Okay, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, I'll do that. By general consent, the meeting is canceled, I mean, it is.
Canceled?
Not canceled.
Adjourned?
Adjourned at 10 o'clock. Oh, yeah, get out of here. We're going to have to go outside and get all the, just go, take everything, do you mind taking all that?